Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First, we're going to call the council to order before we start. I'm calling to order the Legal Affairs Subcommittee with myself as chair and Councillor St. Hilaire and Councillor Feldman.
I also would like to call to order the Subcommittee on Public Services with myself as chair, Councillor Rotundo and Councillor Ames as members, and call to order Committee of the Whole. And just for the record, the other councillors who are here as part of Committee of the Whole, so far we have Councillor Rand is here as well.
Yes. And do you want to...
I would love to.
Thank you all.
Yes. So just as a matter of logistics, before we get going, if you are a member of the public and you are interested in speaking when we get to that part of the meeting when we will open up for public participation, there is a piece of paper on the desk in front of us, and you can add your name and address to that list, and then our Assistant City Clerk, Christine Dixon, will bring that over when we get to that time, and Councillor Houseman and I will just call on folks in the order that you're signed up. We will leave it there for a little while as the meeting gets underway so that nobody misses their opportunity. Sometimes I know you're sitting, and then you become moved to want to speak, and so we'll leave it there so that you can still sign up. I also do want to acknowledge just a few of the other folks who are here in the room with us, in addition to, of course, many residents of the city of Beverly, and we're really glad to have you here. It's always really important, I think, and I think my fellow councillors would agree, when we have meetings like this where there are lots of people in the chambers and public participation, it's one of the most important things, I think, that city government does, and so we're glad to see you here. I do want to, although as Councillor Houseman called Legal Affairs to order, he did mention Ward Six councillor Matt St. Hilaire, but want to acknowledge that Matt is here for his first meeting back after a break. So welcome back, Matt. It's nice to see you.
Thank you very much. Good to be here.
I also want to acknowledge we have a few councillor-elects in the room. At-large councillor-elect Brendan Sweeney and at-large councillor-elect Hannah Bowen are here, and they will both be starting their terms in January, as well as Ward Three councillor-elect Steve Crowley, also here in the room with us, and thank you for being here. Mayor Cahill is in the building, if not in the room. Oh, he is there. Thank you, Mayor, and will be speaking a bit later in the meeting. And I also wanted to acknowledge that our state representative Jerry Paracella is here with us this evening. Thank you, Representative Paracella, for being here. And Matt Cabides is here representing Senator Joan Lovely's office this evening, and so thank you also for being here and representing the senator. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my co-chair this evening, Councillor Houseman, to make a bit of an opening statement, and then I'll do the same, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. Thank you, Councillor Flowers. Good evening, and thank you for attending this meeting of the Legal Affairs Subcommittee and the Public Services Subcommittee, which both Councillor Flowers chairs, and thank you to both her and Councillor Rand for their work with me on this issue. It's important tonight, at the outset, to repeat what the three of us, Councillor Rand, Flowers, and myself, wrote in our letter to the council on October 21st, that we are on record, as is the council, as supporting ambitious clean energy goals to combat climate change, including the creation of a modern resilient electrical grid. However, National Grid's cable project, as it is today, is the source of much concern and many questions of Ward Four and Beverly residents. Tonight's meeting is one of a string of meetings that have already occurred and will be and still will occur in the coming weeks. That is because National Grid will eventually need to seek from the city council a permit to open and use our public ways for the cable installation. There are two primary questions from which all other questions and concerns about this project arise. They are, first, why are our city streets and neighborhoods being used as the route to replace an electric cable that presently runs through Beverly along the MBTA railroad tracks? And secondly, what are the health risks, if any, that might result from the cable running through our city streets and neighborhoods? Succinctly put, there are two issues: construction siting and public health. The answers to these questions, National Grid would and does assert, have already been answered, and the concerns that Beverly residents are raising are being raised too late and are readily dismissed. National Grid has studies on construction siting and public health that it insists are satisfactorily resolve my constituents' concerns and questions. I beg to differ. I'm reasonably certain that National Grid has complied with all the technical requirements it needs so far to move this project forward. National Grid has a large, full-time team working on this project, and it has a lot of experience with this type of project in other cities and towns. In our case, it has already received state-level permitting from the Massachusetts Energy Siting Board, but technical compliance and providing notice to the public, from my constituents' point of view, is fairly meaningless if it is not reasonable and effective notice. And like them, from my personal experience as a city councillor, the public notice process has been fatally flawed. Just two small examples. First, National Grid pointedly made contact with me in 2018 and promised to keep me in the loop. After all, this project runs through the entirety of Ward Four. However, when public notices, and I should add, I am the city councillor for Ward Four. However, when public notices were sent to my constituents about the project, no notice was given to me as a city councillor at City Hall or otherwise. I am listed as a Beverly resident in my individual capacity on their mailing list, but if they did send me any notice, it would never have arrived. Why? Because not only do they have my street number wrong, the address they used does not exist. A second example: A legally required public hearing needed to get their state permit was held on December 11th, 2019, in Ward Four, Ward Four, at the Cove Community Center. This was a hearing I was not notified of. The public was given a two-week comment period from that hearing, and the deadline for that period was December 27th, in the middle of the week between Christmas and New Year's Day. Now, likely, this comment period technically complied with legal requirements, but I don't think anyone could argue with a straight face that a comment period during the heart of the Christmas and New Year's holiday was reasonable or effective. It is easy to cynically think that this notice and timeframe was quite deliberately set to keep public knowledge and participation to an absolute minimum. You could dismiss these flaws as fairly unimportant criticisms of a grumpy local elected official, but that would miss the point. These flaws represent a deeper, more materially defective process, wherein at its heart lies one problem: a lack of trust. A lack of trust in the process, a process managed by National Grid that has created a deep lack of trust in information coming from National Grid. On the subject of trust, I'm going to digress for a moment, and let's step back and consider the background news that my constituents have been exposed to in recent years. Bear with me. Countrywide, once the nation's largest mortgage company, was found guilty in federal court in 2013 of defrauding the federal mortgage agencies Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. Wells Fargo, the fourth-largest nation, excuse me, the fourth-largest bank in the United States, agreed in the year 2020 to pay $3 billion to settle civil and criminal probes into its fraudulent sale practices, practices that the bank admitted caused thousands of its employees to open millions of customer accounts under false pretenses. In 2021, Purdue Pharma has pleaded guilty in federal court twice to criminal wrongdoing in the marketing of OxyContin. The Sackler family, admitting nothing illegal, agreed to pay $4.3 billion and forfeit ownership of Purdue Pharma. And today, on the Commonwealth's website, we can read that Attorney General Maura Healey is suing ExxonMobil Corporation. The complaint alleges that Exxon systematically and intentionally has misled Massachusetts investors and deceived consumers about its central role, its central role its fossil fuel products play in causing climate change. It alleges significant factual misstatements and the failure to make material disclosures. So why do I make these references here tonight? Because we live in an era where it is not hard to find news of large, once-trusted corporations like Countrywide, Wells Fargo, Purdue Pharma, and Exxon, whose statements and conduct was once taken for granted by the general public as upstanding and who could be trusted. But these corporate citizens, we have learned, or in the case of Exxon's case, it is alleged, were not what they appeared to be. So the general public has learned to be skeptical, 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 if not downright cynical, when a large corporation says, "Trust me." So I do not fault my constituents when they hear there's an association in some studies between electromagnetic fields, EMFs, and childhood leukemia. Where the health of their children are concerned, I think that is a perfectly reasonable concern to have, and want to learn and understand a lot more about the subject. So considering the process to date, the lack of trust in National Grid should be no surprise. I will conclude on two specific issues, one on public health, and the second on the construction siting. First, I submitted documents to the council for tonight's hearing about the EMF report that was done by the city's recently retained independent expert, Richard Lester, to evaluate National Grid's EMF report. The report, excuse me, the grid report, covered four years of EMF research from 2014 to 2018. Mr. Lester limited his work, the scope of his work, to a review of exactly the same research studies presented in the National Grid report. With a couple of hours of research on the internet last Friday, I found two research studies, one from 2020 and one from 2021, that suggest more recent evidence of EMS association with childhood leukemia. I am by no means competent to evaluate these recent studies, but I do ask Mayor Cahill this evening to reopen the scope of work by the city's expert to review relevant EMF research up to the present and not limited simply to information provided by National Grid. Likewise, on construction siting, it is my understanding Mayor Cahill will be or has retained an independent engineering assessment of using the MBTA's railroad route for this project. I hope it will not be limited to evaluating National Grid's engineering feasibility report. It should, in my opinion, take its own hypothetical position that the MBTA route can be used and work out a scenario of what doing so would entail. Only then can we compare the two possible construction scenarios properly. I look forward to hearing from Mayor Cahill about that tonight as well. I have not made up my mind on the issues of public health and construction siting, but I agree strongly with all who are unwilling to accept National Grid's documents on their face and insist upon a robust, independent analysis of our own. It is up to us, at this point, to make the most of correcting what has up to now been a very bad permitting process. Finally, in a recent meeting with National Grid, concerned residents, Senator Lovely, and Representative Paracella, and Councillor Flowers and myself, Mayor Cahill expressed a commitment to support the city council to push back against National Grid as it presently conceives this project. I look forward to hearing from his honour about that tonight as well. Councillor Flowers?
Thank you.[772.13][772.13](APPLAUSE) Thank you, Councillor Houseman. I just wanted to also take a moment and acknowledge that I looked over and realized I'd forgotten to mention that Jocelyn Ruel Kersker, the mayor's chief of staff, is also here with us tonight, and I apologize, Ms. Kersker, I think you're behind Councillor Feldman's chair, from my point of view, but I'm sorry, and I see you now, I just wanted to thank you for being here. So thank you to my co-chair of this meeting, Councillor Houseman, for helping to open this shared gathering of these subcommittees of Public Services and Legal Affairs. After we have an opportunity to continue to open this meeting with our statements and invite the mayor to speak, as well as Representative Paracella, if he would like, we will then be leaving time for residents for public participation, and then fellow councillors, for you to ask questions and to be in conversation about this. So I want to say thank you to our fellow councillors for being here tonight and for taking your time to be engaged in this process. As you have heard already in this meeting, Councillors Houseman, Rand, and I have been working on this issue alongside residents in our mayor's office since the beginning of October, but for the rest of our council colleagues, you have not had the opportunity to hear us share about it, nor for the council to have conversation about this issue in the context of a public meeting, and so calling for this shared public meeting allows us to do just that. I want to say thank you again, as well, to all the members of the public who are here tonight, or who are joining us watching on BevCam, or who have been involved in this process all along, for being engaged, for being thoughtful, and for giving of one of your most precious resources, and that is your time. And I know that people's lives are busy and full, and so to have you here this evening and engaged in this conversation with us is both important, and I want to acknowledge and to thank you for that. Our hope for this evening is to allow especially our fellow councillors, who are just learning more about this issue, to hear from us, the mayor, and residents of our community, and then leave time for our fellow councillors to have the floor to ask questions and share thoughts at the end of the meeting. It is certain that we will not resolve this issue in its entirety tonight. Instead, this is an information gathering and sharing session, and there is at this time no vote to be made on this proposed project, as National Grid has not yet officially applied for the grant of location, which Councillor Houseman referred to, which will go before us as a council. And as a council, we will have authority over whether or not to approve that application, which is why this opportunity to share information and begin public conversation as a council is so important. I don't want to take too much of our time more here at the outset, especially as I want to, and we want to make sure that we open the floor to the public, and then leave time for fellow councillors to have the floor, but I do want to share a few of my thoughts after spending time with and working on this issue alongside Councillors Houseman and Rand and many of the residents in this room tonight, to help provide some context and grounding for why I, for my part, felt it important to help call this shared meeting. First, a large issue we are confronting here is around, as Councillor Houseman referenced, a lack of robust and meaningful public process. National Grid last came officially before the council to present this plan, which they called the replacement plan, leading both councillors at the time and many residents to assume that it was a replacement of a line already in place where it ran. National Grid has said subsequently at the meeting that, as Councillor Houseman referenced, that replacement is an industry term, which to them means could be anywhere. I have urged them to consider how laypersons not in their industry might read communication and to communicate more transparently for all of us not in their industry. That presentation happened in September 2018. At the time, it was a plan for informational purposes with several routes shown, and we were told they would come back to the council when there was more certainty and more to share. I feel it important to highlight that it was in September of 2018, because at that time, the council also looked quite different than it does today. Since that time, the seats for Ward One, Ward Three, Ward Five, and Ward Six are all held by councillors other than those who were holding them in September 2018. However, there has been no further official presentation made to this current council, nor seeking from National Grid to update the current council. In addition, National Grid held, as Councillor Houseman said, minimal public meetings for residents, although, as Councillor Houseman said, met minimum statutory obligations. However, I would say particularly given that the last opportunity for such a public informational meeting went before the state setting board was in 2019, and then a global pandemic erupted between then and now, and with minimal attempts at robust communication and transparent communication to residents and councillors. I believe that while the statutory requirements for engagement were met, there was not work done to ensure real and robust communication and process. And to my mind, a poor public process is no public process at all. A poor process that seeks to minimize public engagement rather than to encourage it widely and seek it out when the public is not able to attend does not yield a good nor a fair result, and in part, that's what we're dealing with here. What is being asked by residents that we pause this project until we can better understand both the health and human safety ramifications of the EMFs from the cable running so close to residents' homes and through multiple neighborhoods of our city, as well as environmental impact, in my mind, is not only reasonable, it is critical. No one who has raised these concerns, including myself, Councillor Houseman, Councillor Rand, or the residents, is opposed to the idea that we need safe and reliable electric energy for the future. This is a given, especially as we strive to decarbonize and move away from fossil fuels and toward an ever cleaner energy future. The question here, then, is not about whether or not we should have safe and reliable electric service, of course we should. It is about this project, its siting, and why it cannot remain in a current and existing right-of-way along the MBTA tracks, and about the lack of public engagement and process leading us to this moment, and about unanswered questions about health and human safety. Indeed, as we move toward a cleaner energy future, we need to model doing projects in ways that engage the public fully and take into account not only the location and cost of the project, but also the impacts on health and human safety and on the environment. We want to do the very best we can to this end now, so that we don't look back in 20 or 30 years and realize that we missed the opportunity to best protect both people and environment, moving toward this cleaner energy future. And after all, in Beverly, we see impacts made by pollution from another large corporation in the past, right here in our present, Varian, and we see the importance of ensuring that corporations striving to do business here in our community are held to high standards when it comes to questions of transparency, health and human safety, and environmental care. And Councillor Ames, I trust you know that better than most of us up here, having worked on that issue. I will close with one last thought. Much has been made by National Grid of the urgency now at this juncture to complete this project, to ensure reliable energy service not only to Beverly but all of Cape Anne. On more than one occasion, I have heard National Grid stress this point in a manner that I have taken to calling pulling the fear lever. In my mind, talking about the project in this way attempts to pit Beverly against the rest of the region. My response has been this: National Grid's aging and failing infrastructure that is now urgently in need of repair is not the fault of residents in Beverly who wish to have more information or a robust public process, nor is it the fault of any other community here in the Commonwealth that has pushed back on the siting of these projects. It is National Grid as a corporation that is responsible to keep up with their infrastructure. National Grid is responsible to provide reliable service to residents. And to that end, I intend, as we move through this process, to ask National Grid more questions about the existing line and the existing right-of-way, which is still needed and being repaired and worked on, because even if this new project were to be done, it would not be completed immediately. And so we know that it would not be a quick fix to ensure that Beverly and the rest of Cape Anne immediately had this resilient dual cable-served electricity. So this is a question that I plan to ask and to elaborate more on as the process unfolds, because thus far, I have found myself disappointed with the phrasing of statements around this issue, because of the way that I think it seeks to frighten Beverly's residents and leaders into not pushing back or asking questions about the project by raising the specter of residents across our communities sitting in the dark. And yet, it is my understanding that that buried cable needs to remain at least viable through the completion of this project. I want to pause here, and before we do open the floor more broadly, Mayor Cahill, I'd like to give you the opportunity to speak on this issue if you would like, or to invite into the conversation any of your department heads that you might see fit. So Mayor Cahill, the floor is yours.[1333.01][1333.01](APPLAUSE)
Good evening, everybody, and council colleagues, it's good to see everybody, and also the councillors-elect. I'd hoped you'd be here, and I figured you would, so thank you for that. Council President-elect Flowers, I wanted to say thank you for recognizing Jocelyn Ruel Kersker, our chief of staff, but also, maybe because she's rather new, next to Jocelyn is Ronnie Jacobson, our new constituent services director.
It's really just the chairs.
Yeah, yeah. You can see her.
It's a hard time with the line of sight. I'm sorry.
Ronnie's been working with us for just about a month, so some of you will get to know her as well. So just a few thoughts on how things started, how things have gone, and where we are. And I understand that some people are in the room for the first time tonight, again. So this is, it's a little fuzzy when the first conversation happened, but let's say three and a half years ago that this process started. And the high voltage line, the 115 KV that is being built at some point, is to replace a line that runs along the rail bed right now. So if you think of, we have service in north of the Beverly-Salem Bridge that essentially serves all of Cape Anne, Beverly to Rockport, and there are two lines. The older line, the line that is currently failed, and Grid's been working to try to restore it as a redundancy, as a way to make sure that if the newer of the two lines, which is overhead, were to go down in a storm, that there'd be redundancy. Their plan is to build a new line that would become the main line, and then the overhead line would be the backup or redundant line. And that's my layman's understanding of it, but the reality is that these two lines are meant to be our reliable electrical service for our region going forward. So the line that's being replaced was installed in about 1971. If you think of our rail line going up from, you know, from the Beverly-Salem Bridge up towards Gloucester, it's that line. The other line splits and goes to Newbury Port just north of the depot, right? So we're going up towards Gloucester. On the right of the line is the overhead transmission. On the left of the, when I say the right of the line, I should say the right of the tracks. To the right side of the tracks is the overhead line. To the left side is the existing in-ground line. There are other pieces of infrastructure along the way, including some city infrastructure. There's a point where I think it's a storm water, storm water set of pipes come off a street, meet the railroad, run along the railroad for a way, and then peel off to a street, as an example. So there's a range of infrastructure, whoops, already either in the ground or above the ground, in that right-of-way. So the process started with Grid coming to me and meeting with a number of department heads, and we spent several months pushing, because they said right away that the railway, the rail line wasn't feasible. And we said, "Well, why not? It's been good enough for the last so many years." So anyway, that was several months of us pushing and them pushing back, and they eventually brought a lot of, a lot of information from the MBTA, various reasons why they believe that it's not, quote, "constructable," not feasible to put the line up along the rail bed. That information is in a public document that I was just checking with Jocelyn. It's not on our website yet, but it should be. It was an analysis that Grid conducted called the Constructibility Review. Councillor Houseman referenced it, because we've talked about doing our own. So this constructibility review was a part of what Grid prepared. They had a consultant come on and do this, and they presented it to the council at that meeting in 2018 that both councillors referenced. As I said, we are planning to have our own city consultant assess the feasibility, the constructibility, of going up the rail line, and we've been doing due diligence on that over the last couple of weeks, trying to find the right, the right expertise and the right organization that can conduct that work for us. And Councillor Houseman, your question on that, if you want to repeat it, I'm trying to remember.
It was just basically here what you just said.
Yeah.
What's the status of retaining and the scope of work for that consultant?
Yeah, and I actually was discussing it earlier with one of the neighbors, and another neighbor is supposed to be, we're supposed to be talking after this meeting. I can use names, can I? Yes, no? Looking at the neighbors. But at any rate, you know, I would say that the, and I want to also thank, and I'll do that in a minute, but the Lothr Street neighbors who really coalesced quickly around the issue, and so a couple of the neighbors involved there, right, are providing some guidance and as well on helping us try to find that right, that right outfit to do that work. So, you know, for my part, and councillors, you know this, we've talked about this, and I know some of your colleagues are probably hearing it for the first time, well, no, not for the first time, but hearing it again for the first time in a while. You know, we did push, and we did push on the rail line, and at a certain point, you know, we said, "Look, if you're so convinced the rail line couldn't, can't work, then you've got to, you've got to really show us why." And that's when, that's when Grid did this, hired somebody on to do this analysis. So after that point, I know that they showed you folks in that meeting that there were a couple of routes, a preferred route and an alternate route, that were distilled down from a wider, a much larger number of possible routes that they evaluated, and they went forward with the, with the application process with the state. And there also was the public meeting that happened in late 2018. So I would say that, you know, at that point, I had an understanding that the public process was what the public process needed to be. They had requirements under the law, and they were going to, were going to fulfill those. I think what's come clear in the meantime is that that required public process was in no way sufficient. And so when you both said, "Councillors, that you think an insufficient or flawed process really is a failed process," I think we're all in agreement on that, and I think that, you know, the neighbors have really made that clear when it's, you know, when it's, when it's so clear that outreach that was done just didn't get through, just didn't get people to where you're really understanding. And, you know, I look at the presentation that Grid made, again, back that evening in September of 2018 to the council, and this PowerPoint also will be on our website for you folks to take a look at. The use of language and the understanding of what this project really would be, as compared to what is already there for infrastructure in your neighborhood, I think that was, was really, there was a disconnect there. So anyway, I think there's a lot to... The use of language and the understanding of what this project really would be as compared to what is already there for infrastructure in your neighborhood, I think that was, was really, there was a disconnect there. So anyway, I think there's a lot to speak to the reality that the process hasn't, has not accomplished what the law says it needs to, which is the community needs to understand the abutters, the potential abutters to the proposed route, need to have that full public process and understanding and ability to be heard and ability to, you know, to express. So that hasn't really happened, and that really, I think, is the failure. Now, in discussing the process with the DPU, which is the state agency that hears all these, it's also clear that they've been given, under the latest, the latest state legislation around climate and energy, they've been giving, have been given a directive to be, to take more things into consideration in these siting processes. And so I think we're looking at that and thinking, "Maybe, you know, maybe that wasn't well enough applied in this case." And certainly that, you know, that's something to give pause and give an opportunity to look. And the fact that members of the DPU and the State Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs both stated during the public hearing process back in early October that they were troubled, that the process did seem to fall down so much here. So I think all of those are reasons why we're all in agreement here that we need to be looking, we need to do what we're doing now. We asked, we asked National Grid to pause the project. The term "pause the project," you know, essentially just meant there had been a desire on their part to get started with construction before the winter. I think pause means, "No, not now." You know, "Let's do this work now of really understanding." What we want is, we want to revisit, we want to seriously have a good-faith conversation with National Grid, with the MBTA, with the state about the rail bed, and, you know, why is it not a buildable route? And is that, you know, is that, is there enough there that we ultimately just need to agree with that? I don't know. I would say that, you know, we're going to get somebody on board to do this work. There, there are a lot of things that were suggested about how hard it would be to build in the rail bed, that we know that when it's important enough to the MBTA, that work gets done. So, you know, I think it's more for us, that, that route, it's a shorter route mileage-wise. It's a route that is better for us as a community in terms of the, the construction upheaval, in terms of all that comes with that, in terms of the maintenance over time. So I think, you know, we're going to look at it through a different lens than perhaps there, the person they brought on board looked at it. Certainly a different lens than maybe the MBTA will look at it. We've got our collective energy and our collective commitment to really push on this. We'll see where it takes us. Let me see if there's anything else I wanted to make sure I didn't miss here. So we will, we will get started as soon as we can on that, our own look at constructibility and feasibility of that line. We also, as Councilor Hausman referenced, we did have a peer review done of the EMS study that Grid did. I remember saying both to you council colleagues, and to date it's been Councilor Flowers, Hausman, and Rand, and tonight now it's obviously everybody. And part of the reason that some of you councilors are hearing some of this, more recent conversation for the first time, is we all are bound by state-open-meeting law, and certain councilors can't talk about things with other councilors who are on the same subcommittee as they are. So it's not just trying to make sure that you don't talk about it with four other councilors so that you hit a quorum of the whole, you have to worry about a quorum of a subcommittee. So part of the, I think the value in this meeting is that kind of sharing, too. But on the point of the EMS study and the review, I said to you folks before, and if you have some thoughts on adding scope, we can easily add scope. So your thoughts, Councilor Hausman, if you could just get them down in an email?
Absolutely.
It seems to make sense. You know, we'll, and we also, the gentleman who conducted that peer review is ready and willing to, you know, to attend a meeting and walk through the findings that he has, and maybe it makes more sense to add some scope and get that work done first, but that's something we can do together. And I think that's probably it for now. Happy to, you know, to be part of hearing any thoughts that you neighbors have and trying to answer any questions. But I think where we're at right now together is, well, the other thing I want to say is I really am grateful both for my colleagues and local government, because, you know, we really, when we stand together, we can, we can try to do more, we can try to accomplish more. And the neighbors, the fact that you've come together so effectively, so quickly, and that you bring a lot of expertise, and that you go and find the expertise you need that you don't have, I think that's, you know, that speaks well to our ability together to revisit this route, our ability together to work with Grid, to work with the relevant state agencies and state, you know, leaders in the Baker Administration as needed and when needed, and to work with our own legislative delegation, who are always in there, you know, putting their shoulder to the wheel on anything that matters to the community. So I think, you know, we've got, we've got, I think, what it takes here to really revisit this. And, you know, Grid and the MBTA and the state can be a winner in this as well, because if, you know, if this is done right, then we've got what we need for the next 50 years plus in our region. And if this is done right, it can also, I think it can also show the way in a process that's been a challenging process through the state for siting of necessary electric infrastructure at a time when, as you heard both the councilors say, in order to meet our greenhouse gas emission reduction targets, in order to meet our obligations, in order to make sure that our kids and grandkids are living in a world that isn't hostile to human life, we're talking about extreme weather and climate, it seems clear that a significant part of that answer, in both the building for heating and cooling our buildings and in moving around via transportation, a significant part of that answer is electrification. And so the power grid is going to be ever more important. So there's an opportunity here, I think, to set a, you know, to set us all in the right direction, both on our local project and on how it's going to work throughout the state through permitting. So I think there's an opportunity here to get some good things done. You know, we'll work at it together, and we'll see where it takes us. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Representative Perisela, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much, and good evening. Yeah, I'll keep it brief because I want to hear from all the residents, and I know you want to hear from them as well. But I just want you to know that I'm here to support you. I think Councilor Flowers and Hausman very well articulated the concerns of the residents and the process. At the meeting that we had not too long ago, National Grid admitted that their public meeting in Beverly was sparsely attended, which is showing you that I think there was flaws in how they were able to notify residents about the process and about the project. And a lot of people have been caught by surprise. So I'm here to support you in any way you can. I believe that we should take a look at that railroad right away again. Senator Lovely and myself are going to have a meeting with National Grid. I'm going to have the chairman of the committee that has jurisdiction over utilities join us in that meeting, and we'll do whatever we can to work with the MBTA to see if it's feasible to have that right-of-way be used as it is presently. So just, you know, I'm here to support you, here to support the residents, and you can count on me in any way possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative Perisela, and thank you again for being here with everyone. And I do want to also, again, just for folks who may just be joining us, Senator Lovely is being represented by a member of her team, Matt Kowidus. She's a little bit under the weather, so she is not here, but her office is represented. And as Representative Perisela alluded to, they are working together on this issue as well. So at this point, I think we're ready to open the floor for public participation. We do have a list of folks who have signed up to speak, but if anyone would like to add your name at this point, it's not too late. Oh, thank you, Councilor Ames. Councilor Ames to the rescue, just at the right moment.
A full-service counselor.
I tried.
So we have the list here, but I do know, as I said, sometimes I think when people are here in chambers, and maybe you haven't had the chance to speak at the podium before, it is not an easy thing to decide if you're going to put your name down. So as we come to it, and we're getting through the list, if there is someone who you would like to speak, and you're not signed up, we'll make that possible. So Councilor Hausman and I had discussed just for making sure that every speaker can get heard. I'm going to have, let him counsel us for a minute.
Twenty minutes. We could do three minutes.
That's what I was thinking, too. All right, we're on the same page there. So we want to make sure everyone gets heard, but we want to make sure that everyone also sort of has the same amount of time with the floor. So Councilor Hausman, are you going to keep time?
Yes.
So we'll do three minutes per speaker. Councilor Hausman is setting up his timer now, I see it. So when you hear the timer go off, if you could just sort of wrap up at that point. You don't have to stop mid-word, but if you can sort of hold yourself to three minutes, that will ensure that we get to hear from everybody, and then councilors also have the chance to have some conversation. So Karen Fogarty. And even though we'll be saying your names, some of you, I know you know this process, but when you come up to the podium, if you would, just state your name and address for the record before you jump in.
Dear City Council President-elect and members of the City Council, thank you for the opportunity to address you about the proposed National Grid 115-kilowatt high-voltage power line project. My name is Karen Fogarty, and I have lived at 169 Lothrup Street in Beverly for 29 years. There is a great deal of information to be shared about this project, far more than could be covered in a two-minute statement. I would like to begin by noting, and I'm just going to say parenthetically, some of the things that I've said here, I'm saying have already been mentioned. We didn't collaborate our statements beforehand. I'd like to begin by noting that only four members of the current City Council were present when representatives of National Grid gave their only presentation to the Beverly City Council about this project in September 2018. So I understand that this is a lot for you to take in. As you may have learned, there were only two other opportunities for the public to learn in a public forum about this project. The first was an open house in November of 2018. The second was the public hearing held by the Energy Facility Siting Board on December 11th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the Cove Community Center. No members of the City Council or other representatives of the city were at that meeting, which fewer than 15 residents of Beverly attended, because based on the information we have obtained, you were not invited. The public process of educating the community about this project and seeking public input from stakeholders and elected officials of the city has been a sham. In addition to the gross inadequacy of the community engagement by National Grid with the residents of Beverly, in much of the media mailings to residents, this project was characterized as a replacement. It is not a replacement, it is a relocation. As we speak with people along the route, a great many feel that they were deceived and thought that there was already a line in their roadway that was being replaced, so they did not raise objection. As you have heard, National Grid has an underground cable in the MBTA right-of-way, which has been in place there for more than 40 years, and which requires replacement and technical upgrade. National Grid could have proceeded with its reliability project with a plan to replace the existing line in that existing right-of-way. National Grid offered a number of reasons why they could not replace the existing line in its current location. Those reasons included compliance with MBTA distance rules for a cable of this proposed load, acquisition of some private property easements, tree cutting, positive train controls, which work which was scheduled to be completed in 2021, and the revocability of a right-of-way license with the MBTA. Some of their cited barriers are no longer at issue. For example, the positive train, and some we believe are resolvable. They presented a want as a need. I'm going to skip quickly to, National Grid has placed the full burden of their infrastructure upgrade upon the city of Beverly. Two years of highly disruptive construction and the relocation of a high-voltage power cable from its present location within the MBTA right-of-way to below the streets of Beverly through high-density residential neighborhoods. The MBTA distance rules were greater than 20 feet, but this cable in our streets will be less than 15 feet from the inside of many homes. Indeed, at the intersection of East Lothrup and East Street, the plans filed by National Grid with the Energy Facility Siting Board have the cable being sited in the sidewalk, not four feet from a home. That homeowner has only you left to say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen Fogarty, of 169 Lothrup Street. Very well done. And next, Tim Avril. And same thing, name and address for the record, please.
I'm Tim Avril, 165 Lothrup Street. I've been in Beverly for 50 years, proudly raised two daughters here who are graduates of Beverly High School. And during the time that I've been in Beverly, I've served on subcommittees of the school committee. I've also been the campaign manager for some successful and unsuccessful political candidates. And I want to say, this is the first time that I've ever appeared in front of City Council to talk about a lack of fairness of procedure on a situation that has occurred. I've won some issues here, I've had candidates succeed, I've had candidates lose, I've been on committees and had disagreements, but I've always felt that the process was fair, and I always accepted the results. Tonight, I'm here to say the process was unfair, fatally flawed, and we do not have to accept the results. In a recent letter I wrote to the Salem Evening News on behalf of a large group of residents about the situation, I indicated that some of the things we've already talked about, the language of essentially replacement, which led a lot of us who did receive the letter of the law was we'd get a notice. We got a notice, but the notice said we're going to replace a line. So nothing was triggered at that time. Then we had the COVID pandemic. We couldn't go out and meet people in large groups, and we weren't informed. And as Scott already mentioned, Councilor Hausman, pardon me, but Councilor Hausman wasn't even informed of a meeting in Ward Four. In short, we have a fatally flawed process, one that when it's looked at, at the state level, will be seen as a real disaster, but we have a chance to do it right. Our councilors can decide right now that we will pause this project. And basically, you've all seen our street signs out there. We started with "stop the project." We changed the wording to "pause the project" because we all agree that we need safe, reliable, healthy electric transmission, and also that what we're talking about here is not a NIMBY issue. It's not a couple of people on Lothrup Street saying, "We don't want you digging in our street." It is something that affects every single ratepayer all the way up the line, and people in Gloucester and Rockport are supporting us on this issue as well. So we believe in that. We congratulate Mayor Cahill for the political courage it takes to say, "I was pushing for one thing, they pushed back, we accepted the change," and now to say, "You know what? Enough citizens across all of the North Shore are saying, 'We cannot go ahead this way.'" So most of what I had to say has been said by others. I do think, I urge, if 50 years in Beverly and raising two kids and being not a squeaky wheel, conserve me something. This time, the wheel is squeaking, and I'm looking to the City Council to provide the grease. Thank you.
The next person is Eric Boker. If I apologize if I mispronounced your last name.
Good evening. My name is Eric Boker, and I live at 171 Lothrup Street. When this process began, I had just moved When this process began, I had just moved into that house. We've lived there for three and a half years, so we didn't get notice to begin with, nor was that provided to us when we bought the house, but I don't see, I don't believe that that's a requirement. But we've been very interested in this over the last couple of months since we found out about it. I will begin by saying I am not a transmission line engineer. I am not a power engineer, and I did not work for an electrical company, but I am an electrical engineer by training. That said, I do note that from the reports that I have read, that I have questions, and I'm very encouraged and proud to hear that the reports are being reviewed. I didn't come here with specific technical comments, but I would like to provide some notes or some suggestions on types of things to consider when you're having discussions with folks to further review reports or do additional studies. And specifically, I would encourage you to have folks look at what's known as a conservative assessment, and that is in the case where if you're reading through the numbers of the reports that I have seen, EMF report and others, they talk about, you know, the sort of average power load and average or proposed distance, you know, from homes and things like that. But a conservative estimate or a conservative report would have more of like the, you know, the worst-case scenario is a horrible buzzword, but it's, you know, what could this potentially be? What if, you know, what are the numbers when you have the max load going through? What are the numbers when you encounter construction situations like on Lothrup Street and like many other streets where there's ledge, where there's several other utilities under the same road, and you have to not go eight, 10 feet down, but you have to be two feet, you know, only two feet down, or maybe only five to 10 feet from a residence? So this is sort of gives you a better picture of what, you know, the sort of higher/conservative estimates might be for the levels that the communities, the community members and specific households might be experiencing. And so you can get a sort of a better picture on what that might be, whereas, you know, an average load or ideal may not provide that sort of information to someone. And so I encourage you to look for that information and also, you know, to keep in mind that other things besides health, you know, direct health effects, but also effects on medical devices and other types of communication equipment are something that should be considered when evaluating levels. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jim Younger, 32 Butman Street, longtime Beverly resident. My children both graduated from Beverly High School. My mother graduated from Beverly High School, and Beverly High School was at the Briscoe School. And my grandfather actually had Jerry Paracella's job in 1965. I'm a taxpayer, a ratepayer, a longtime volunteer, having sat up there on the Beverly Historic Commission for nearly 20 years, and most of all, an enthusiastic supporter of Beverly and all of its amazing attributes for which I need to thank everyone. Thank you all and everyone in this room for your interest in ensuring that Beverly continues to be a safe, healthy, vibrant, inclusive, welcoming community. Thank you, council members. Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Thank you, Council Flowers, Council Rand, Council Ames, Council Copeland, and Council Hausmann for your support and interest in this, as it's been said, fatally flawed process. How did we get here? Councilors Rotundo, Feldman, Saint Sier, Flaherty, and President Guancey, thank you for the opportunity to provide some additional information about this project. An urge that you send an email to reliableenergy101@gmail.com, which provides easy access to our community website, which has lots of other additional resources. Councilors, the next move is yours. We need to pause the project, deny the location permits, and ensure that the 115-kV high-voltage line buried along the railroad tracks remains running down the railroad tracks. If you look closely at National Grid's application to the Energy Facility Siting Board, you'll see that this project was never intended to be a replacement project, but rather a relocation project where a new high-voltage line would be relocated through the city streets rather than replaced along the railroad tracks. National Grid has never had any intention of running this new line down the railroad tracks. It was only the urging of the mayor and his staff who suggested National Grid review the potential option to run the high-voltage line down the railroad track. National Grid, through their consultant, notes four reasons why they cannot use the railroad right-of-way. And in the interest of time, I actually highlighted all that in a much longer letter, and I submitted that earlier, and it went to the town clerk's office, so I hope that you'll look at that. And if anybody goes to the website, they can actually see the documents that the mayor talked about tonight and read more about the letters and everything else. So I conclude by saying, please pause this project, ask National Grid to play nicely in the same sandbox that is the MBTA railroad, ask for an independent review of this project, and I have already provided a potential engineering consultant to Mayor Cahill. She stands ready to review National Grid's analysis of this $200 million project to replace the N-192 electrical line within the railroad right-of-way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Younger. The next speaker that signed up is David Carnavale. Mr. Carnavale, name and address for the record when you get to the podium, please.
Hello, my name is David Carnavale. I live at 208 Dodge Street in Beverly. I've been here my whole life. I'm here today because I'm on the Board of Directors of Temple Benet Abraham, and this cable that they want to put down Lothrup Street is going to go right in front of the temple. Now, we have many children going to the temple every week and all different times of the day, and I just don't think that this is safe enough to have it go down Lothrup Street. And I think that what they should do is dig up the railroad tracks, take all the contamination with all the oil that they put down there, and then reinstall the new cable there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carnavale. Next, we have Jad Stella, and I might be mispronouncing your first name, I apologize.
My name is Jad Stella, 111 Cross Lane. I forgot to switch it up, moved along from Lothrup Street. Cross Lane also, right along the proposed cable route, and my home, like many others, is very close to the street, no sidewalk there. And, you know, it's something where I wanted to share a little bit of my experience. So number one, I've lived in Beverly for nine years in the home that I live in. We love it. We love to be outside. I have my young son, he's seven years old. We love to play outside. And, you know, this one thing is pretty concerning to me. When the literature came out, I remember reading it back in 2019, I was right about December, and we were concerned, kind of quickly realized that the intended path was right by our house. And, you know, one of the things that stood out at the time was the timing of the meeting, which I think was the December 11th or so. And I remember at the time, they actually invited anyone who's concerned to be a limited participant on a sitting board, so you could, you know, kind of submit your interest and they would send you literature. So we sent it in, I remember it was December 24th, they actually sent the letter in because I actually go find a stamp, so I do remember that was the case. We sent it in, and we never heard anything back. So that just started to really raise suspicion around the true intentions and the actual transparency around the project. You know, I think it's something where the literature that I've seen, that's been readily available to the public, the focal point has really been, it's all about the electricity, it's all about the reliability for, you know, K-VAN, SX, et cetera. If it were me and I was putting out that literature to the public, I would also couple that with the reasons why the line cannot go down the railroad. I've learned there's reasons why, but I couldn't really find them readily available. So that's a key question that I've had in my mind. And then, you know, I think it's just really that the project is safe. You know, I think that all of the literature that's been put there on the safeness and the health of the project has been a study that has been sponsored by National Grid, so would really welcome an independent, robust study that be, you know, kind of conducted so that we can all have peace of mind, at the very least, if we don't relocate the cable to the railroad. So thank you.
Thank you.
The next person on the list is Matt DeCicco.
Good evening. Thank you, members of the City Council, Mayor Cahill. My name is Matthew DeCicco. I live at 178 Lothrup Street. I'm here tonight, along with many other residents, to ask you to pause this project by denying the permit to National Grid. This project has been flawed from the beginning, from junk mail notifications to hanging public notices in closed public buildings due to COVID-19, to last-minute notices about an EFSB Zoom meeting and knocking on our doors while we were at the live Zoom meeting. Again, you know, they've gone through the process to check the boxes that they needed to check, but the public process was fatally, fatally flawed. This process has been going on for a few years with the vast majority of citizens along the proposed route, and the city were unaware due to deceptive ways of, again, checking boxes and pushing this project forward. National Grid, as a global company, has used this playbook time and time again. They most recently did this in cities and towns such as Winchester, Woburn, Stoneham, and Wakefield, all of whom tried to stop them due to this deceptive practice. Unfortunately, all four of these towns failed in their efforts to stop National Grid and bring them to the table for a better and more transparent process. It's time to stop the bully in the room. It's time for Beverly to take a stand against this company. It's time to bring them to account for their actions and bring them to the table for an open, honest, and transparent process that will involve you, the city, and all of us that live within it. We, the citizens of Beverly, are asking the City Council to pause this project because this does not just affect the citizens along the route, it infects the entire city and all the ratepayers attached to this project. National Grid said that they had the proposed three possible routes, one along the right-of-way, the primary route, and a secondary route. Some of the excuses for not using the right-of-way were, you know, the positive rail stuff, their claim to working hours, which has been proven false since they've been working since April, night and day, to repair their failed line. You know, it's, you know, they work with the MBTA when it's convenient for them, not just in Beverly and all sorts of other cities and towns, but they don't take into account the citizens that live in those cities and towns. National Grid thought that the citizens of Beverly and the officials would be the path of least resistance. It's time to let them know in one loud voice from the mayor, the City Council, and the citizens above Beverly that we will not be the easier path, that we, as a city, will have input and say over a major infrastructure project within our city limits that will affect our citizens, our municipal utilities such as water and sewer, our environment, our public safety and public health. So again, I urge this body to deny their application until they come to the table for an open, honest, and transparent discussion about this project. Thank you very much.
The next person on our list is Rabbi Allison Adler.
Hi, I am Rabbi Allison Adler, and I live at 12 Giddings Avenue, and I have been the rabbi, spiritual leader of Temple Benet Abraham. This is my 11th year in Beverly, and the synagogue, Temple Benet Abraham, the community is over 100 years old. We have about 200-member households from across the North Shore. We run a separate menor religious school for pre-K through 7th grade and programs for teenagers. I'm on the Human Rights Committee, the Race Equity Task Force, and I'm a founding member of the Beverly Multi-Faith Coalition, made up of spiritual leaders representing several faith communities. And I'm grateful to live in and be part of Beverly, and I hope to live here forever. So this is my first time also standing here before the City Council. I've shown up for meetings. You've probably seen me here for various things when you were discussing other things, but I've never spoken. And like others who have spoken tonight, I was unaware, we were unaware, of the reality of this project until recently, and over the past week, I have attended meetings with neighbors, some are members of our congregation who live right on Lothrup Street, and I'm deeply concerned about the egregious violation of trust and due process and have questions about the impact on health and well-being of our neighborhood, including environmental impacts on the earth, right, that is connected to our homes and where we pray and where we take care of our children. Last week, our Temple Benet Abraham Board of Directors voted unanimously for me and others to represent the congregation as we stand with our neighbors to ask you to halt this project. Our leadership, we actually have members of our Board of Directors and other members here, at least four, you heard from one of them earlier, so they're here as well. Our leadership does not weigh in very often on things like this. Siting decisions are coming to City Council meetings in this official capacity, but this is one that we could not sit out. This has been a fatally flawed, as we've heard, process, and we are dedicated to deliberation and thoughtful, fair processes and communication. It is important to evaluate the project fully and do what is in the best interest of the whole, of the community. Temple Benet Abraham stands with our neighbors and our members and our friends. We want more of an opportunity to understand what the project is about and the risks involved and the best ways to have a safe, reliable energy for all. I also want to add that I speak for the Beverly Multi-Faith Coalition, and I think this is a moral imperative, and the other clergy and religious leaders at our meeting last week agree with me, and that caring for each other and the earth are the values that cross religious boundaries, of course, right? And that is why our coalition is so strong, because we agree on so much. And I want to acknowledge that we have at least Reverend Greg Carmer from our neighbor, the Church in the Cove, is here as well, and others who could not be here stand with us. So in a time when our country is so divided, and it's worthy to note that this particular situation has brought people together, has brought neighbors together, united in purpose, because no matter our opinions about other political matters, when it comes down to it, we all want what is best for our neighborhood and for our children. So it's easy, I hope you all will do the right thing, and we'll pause the project. Thank you.
The next person on our list is John Quinn.
Thank you to the members of the City Council and Mayor Cahill for this opportunity. My name is John Quinn, and I live at Pine Road. My wife and I and our family have lived here the last 45 years. I'm simply here to stand in support of the pause. Ever since I heard about the initial notification process, it was clear to me that the timing, the effort in terms of notification, were all slated to operate the same way that President Kennedy did when he decided to announce that his brother was going did when he decided to announce that his brother was going to be the next Attorney General. He waited until Saturday morning, and it slid. That's one of a million examples of the playbook that's involved here. You can see it in the notification process. How difficult would it have been, for instance, to have notified by registered mail to show the importance of the issue of every abutter, let alone their elected representatives? Members of the city councils who were not notified, that's called lowballing. This was intended to be run through in the dark of the night. No one is ever going to know what kind of arrangement National Grid has with MBTA in this instance. But as you look at the vagueness of the objections, you have to come to wonder whether or not this is just simply another hand of poker that is played between two allies that deal in hundreds of millions of dollars of arrangements. Beverly is on the short end of that arrangement. I would urge you to go with the pause recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have one more speaker signed up to speak on the list, but I do want to just ask if anyone else would like to speak who's not signed up. Alyssa, who is signed up, was one of the first neighbors to sort of reach out and engage very fully, and so I'd like to sort of give her the last word during this time, if she would like it. I was gonna say, I saw a few hands. I see someone in the back row. I know there's someone over here. Okay, you're gonna, all right. I can't really see. Come on over. Someone over on this side, is that right? Oh, Mr. Levine. It's you. So name an address for the record.
Hi, my name is Neil Levine. I'm at 36 Thorndike, not on Lothrup, but real close. I think a lot's been said. There's one word that I really wanted to bring into focus that I haven't heard so much this evening, and it's accountability. This is accountability in action. I think just a thank you to the councilors, Houseman Flowers, and Rand. Part of the reason we're here tonight, that in that public sighting hearing, those councilors gave voice to the inadequacy of the process, and the response of that hearing, those on the committee said they were upset by what they had heard in terms of it. And that was bringing and channeling the voice of many of you to get to a point where we could be here tonight to talk about a pause responsibly. Thank you to the mayor for stepping up and into this, the light of this controversy and joining the forces that look, let's take a breath here and review the record, which all seem to agree has been inadequate and, as many have said, fatally flawed. The neighbors who have held all of us accountable by raising serious concerns in reaching this point. But here are my questions about accountability. Where does the final word truly rest? I'm concerned that even a negative vote by this council will be litigated at the state level. And so it will, if the National Grid has complied with all the legal requirements preceded with the site, does it have the grounds to address a negative vote by the council? And that leads to the accountability of our state delegation and actors. Is that the final venue? And then the accountability of National Grid itself for being an upstanding, diligent, responsive, true partner in being a neighbor in not only this community but down the road. And will this activity, as some had said earlier, and what Councilor Flowers said eloquently, the responsibility for maintenance of a reliable electric grid lies with them, working in partnership with us as ratepayers, as taxpayers, and the like. And the idea that they could model not a lowballing or unfair lack of responsive and intense engagement, but truly a dialogue with the communities, not just here, but along the North Shore elsewhere, because that's what their future is. And so does the accountability lie with them to model that kind of behavior? I think that's what this community is looking for. I can't say, the last thing I'll say is I'm tremendously impressed with what I've seen tonight. This is accountability. I'm not an electric engineer. I have no expertise on the health matters. I don't have any expertise on power. I do have expertise on international, federal, and local governance, and it's been a shining example here tonight. Thank you.
I saw someone in the back row. Yes, thank you. Name an address for the record, if you would.
My name is Bob Setti. I live on 173 Lothrup Street. I'm relatively new to Beverly, about nine years now, and my wife and I decided to retire here for not only for Beverly purposes but also family nearby. And I just wanted to say a few things. I tend to be a little bit under the radar, and I don't like doing these things, but this type of outpour from the community on this situation makes me want to say something. I want to say I was impressed with the opening comments of our people up there, and I think it hit the nail on the head of a lot of our concerns about what's happening. I think I'd like to stress the safety issue, but also a need for this type of movement for the future, which I support, but I think more importantly, the safety for our community. And I'm here just to say that Mayor Cahill says we want to do it right. So I implore the council and anybody that's involved in this decision to do it right, make the studies apply to what's our concerns, and pause this project so if it indeed has to go through the way they say it has to go through, it's done right. And I have faith in you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Yes. Or two more.
Hello, I'm Eugenie Roy, and I'm a resident of Beverly for about 21 years. I really have nothing to say except that I support everything that everyone has said in this room tonight, but I would also like to bring a copy of one of the letters that were delivered probably only about maybe a month ago, right before, I think at the 11th hour of finding out about all of this. And it really reflects the fact that the word relocate is nowhere on this literature, and the word replaces there. So I was one of the people who were duped by the wording and thinking that this was a replacement of a utility that's already in the street in front of my house. And of course, I would want that to be fixed if it needed to be. But when I found out exactly what it was, I went back and actually fished this out of my recycling bin. I had actually ripped it in half. And I reread it very closely, and nowhere does it say in any way relocate. It says replace. So anyway, it's very misleading, and I actually, can I approach?
Thank you. And for the record, your address as well.
Oh, okay, sorry. 239 Lothrup Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for our fellow councilors, we'll make sure that the city clerk's office has a copy and can distribute that to everyone. Ms. Bowen, I see you, but I also saw another hand behind you first, and then we'll go to you. If you'd like to go ahead. So name an address, if you would, for the record.
I'm Helen Lewis. I live at 99 Bisson Street, and just want to say again, I echo everything I've heard tonight. But one quick question for you about language of replacing versus updating. If it is that the line is relocated, what happens to the existing one? And I did hear in another meeting that was recorded online, someone talking about, you know, what the impact of his living, of the line staying, or what happens to that. So curious to know what you think about that. And thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, so Hannah Bowen at 13 Thorndike Street, so just half a block off the route, I believe, where it twists and turns, and mostly here to listen tonight, so I want to thank everyone. The only two questions that I haven't heard more on since the last meeting I attended about this issue and would like to, I'm not sure where the answers lie, but one is whether there is still any appeal process or any other sort of ways to approach pausing the project beyond just the permits to actually get in the ground. So where do those conversations stand? And then the other is around our opportunity to speak directly to National Grid. I know there was a meeting scheduled and then canceled. So in addition to the National Grid meetings being difficult for us to know about and attend, to what extent are they willing to meet with us? So if anyone has ideas on that, those are some of the things on my mind that I haven't heard update on yet.
Thank you. And I do want to mention, just by way of process, especially for people, if you, if this is the first meeting you're attending, when there's public comment, I know some of you are raising really good questions, and this is not the time for councilors to be able to go back and forth with you on all of those. Some of them we may not have the answers to, and so I've been making notes. I know other councilors have as well. But I do want to mention in response to the question about further engagement with National Grid, I do notice there are some National Grid representatives in the room right now, and I think our process that we are envisioning is that we would invite them to a subsequent meeting like this of the joint subcommittees and be able to more fully engage together. Is that fair to say, Councilor Houseman?
Yeah, this is not the last meeting we will have, and we'll have more informational meetings as we get more information to both share with and have dialogue with the public.
Is there anyone else who is not signed up to speak who feels moved to do so at this point? Okay. So at that, then I would like to invite, as I said, Alyssa Raymond Reed is signed up to speak. She was one of the initial neighbors who engaged with Councilors Houseman Rand and myself, which is why I wanted to sort of keep her as the last word, if she would like it. And I think she would like it. So if you would give us your name and address for the record, and then the floor is yours.
Great. My name's Alyssa Raymond Reed. I live at 163 Lothrup Street. I've lived in Beverly since 2010. I have two kids. I am so overwhelmed, and it's a little bit intimidating to have the last word after so many beautiful, eloquent, heartfelt, articulate, well-researched, upset, demanding, passionate, hopeful comments have been made. I want to just take a moment to breathe that in because we are living in a time that we don't have a lot of good civic discourse. And unfortunately, we haven't had the chance even to gather in person to look at each other. You can't even see me. You can't see my smile. I couldn't see the outrage or the passion, but I could really feel it. And I'm really sorry that so much of this process happened under the cloak of a pandemic where we could not engage together. But that does not mean that the process has to be fatally flawed. And I am so grateful to my community, my elected officials, even my, in this moment, opponents for showing up and being here and listening and engaging and putting themselves out there. This, just so everyone understands, I'm a labor and civil rights and environmental attorney, and this caught me off guard during a time where I was not focused in my home community on the issues that I work on with my professional hat. I first sent an email out to some of my city councilors and to my community worrying about bike lanes in the aftermath of digging this up, because I did just skim what looked like junk mail using the word replacement line. And that makes me feel really aware of what it must have been like for so many other people to receive notice during a pandemic or during a time where there were so many other things going on, technical language very thick, stuck in without a return address to your door. And in a short span of time, when I first sent that call about bike lanes and complete streets, it became evident very, very, very quickly that no one knew what the heck was going on. And I'm talking about everybody. As the last few weeks, and you know, it's really only been a few weeks, have unfolded, I haven't met one person who fully understood the full gravity of the situation and the potential impact. That includes business owners, faith leaders, and elected officials. That's wrong, and I think you've heard that very clearly tonight. There have been some questions that have come up about where we're at legally, and I am happy to have conversations with people as I have been about that. Right now, we're at a very unfortunate juncture where there has already been a citing decision handed to National Grid. We have a few different levers that are still at our disposal for pushing back. There's also the potential and the hope to engage in meaningful dialogue to create a new way. And there's a couple pieces of information I just want to share about what that could look like. But I also want to acknowledge that fighting back is also a pathway. So in law, you oftentimes get ready to litigate while you try to settle. In this case, our city council and potentially some other entities in Beverly, along with our elected officials, along with our business leaders and faith leaders, are in solidarity to use the levers at our disposal in the city to say no and engage in solidarity movement against this sighting. We can simultaneously engage in a meaningful conversation about what if? What if National Grid envisioned itself as a utility, as a company, that was going to be providing reliable electricity across the state and in broader territory in a way that prioritized health and the environment and cost and impact to ratepayers and not profits? What if, because we have a new climate law that demands new standards be applied to citing decisions, Beverly pioneered what those decisions could look like and how they would benefit everybody, and people would feel good about those next reliability routes? Instead of plowing through Beverly's process, which is what we expect National Grid will do if city council decides to not permit, what if National Grid sat down and said, hmm, we can create a new business model because we have to, because in the state of Massachusetts, which is a leader on climate change, we know we have to decarbonize, we know we're going to have to cite more of these electricity lines, so let's stop fighting all the time and spending money on fighting and pitting people against each other and pitting interests against each other, and let's figure out a new way. That's what I'd really like to see. I'd really be interested in that, and I think there's going to have to be those conversations as we get to 2030, 2040, and 2050. We have to see fossil fuel companies transition off of fossil fuels. They're going to have to have these conversations. They can either fight constantly or they can engage meaningfully. I hope that today was a great example of the good faith of residents in municipalities like Beverly, which do not have the power to fight Goliaths like National Grid, but we do have moral justice on our side. And I'd like to say, let's have that And I'd like to say, let's have that conversation. Thank you so much for listening today and giving me the last word.
Thank you. And thank you again to everybody who is here tonight, everybody who spoke, everyone who came to the podium. Again, it's, it's been referenced by my fellow councilors, it's been referenced by many of you as speakers, the importance of civic engagement, and you all really represented that tonight. So thank you for being here for that. Councilor Housman, do you want to open the floor for other councilors now to me?
Yeah, I'd like to open the, the floor for our fellow councilors to ask questions of, I guess primarily the mayor at this point, or if they want to have questions, they ask specific members of the public.
Or just to make a comment.
Or just to make a comment, yeah. I'll start with legal affairs, if you don't mind. See, Councilor.
Do not.
Councilor Feldman has her hand up. Councilor Feldman.
Thank you. So I also thank you for everyone coming tonight. This is really, as a, as a sitting counselor, this is my first public meeting that can have, have been attended by, by people. So this is really, I, I love seeing democracy and civic engagement in action, so I'm really appreciative of everyone that took the time to come tonight. I had two kind of specific questions, and pardon, I'm, I'm new to all of this. I was not aware of a lot of the background on this, and I was not on the council at the time. And I'm not sure who best to answer this, but I have two questions. One is, this, in the study prior to the 2018 vote, what was the MBTA's role in that study? Were they a direct contributor? Like, I, I just am wondering how engaged the MBTA was in that part of the process and what their role was in that study. And then, two, similar to Ms. Bowen's question, I, I believe it was Ms. Bowen's question, I was wondering if there were any plans to remediate the underground cable that, under the MBTA tracks, when it was, if it was to be, to be moved in location, if, when it was defunct? Because there is reference to that line needing to be repaired and contamination, and my concern is just kicking the can down the road one way or the other in terms of what is the remediation plan? If this was the plan, what is the step for that if it was going to be defunct? And if, I don't even know if either of those questions can be answered, or if they were part of a study, and who is the best person to answer that?
I'll, I'll try to respond to two of them briefly and also invite the mayor, if he, if he'd like to add to it. As to the first question about the MBTA's role, I really don't know. I'm not sure from the work that I've done so far and the conversations and research I've done so far, who in this room might know that answer, other than the National Grid reps, who we will meet and talk with at a different later meeting. As a part, as a, as concerning the remediation, part of the reason, as I understand it, the National Grid wants to replace the, the existing line is in fact to perform remediation with the contamination that's coming from that line as part of the replacement process. But I, I'm not familiar with the details of that. And if the mayor would like to add anything to that, I'd, you know, welcome to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and, and Councilor Feldman. So two things. Before Grid Representatives met with me and some department heads in August of 2018, they met with the MBTA because that was really the, the pending and driving question was why not the right of way. And, and so it also stands to reason that the consultant that they hired, but you know, we can, we can bring that to them. I don't want to put them on the spot and have them try to answer anything tonight, but, but we can bring that question. It would just stand to reason that the consultant they hired did speak with folks at the MBTA further. And when you, when you look through this document, it seems clear. To the question about the existing line, so the line needs, the, the last I was told is that their hope is that it'll be functional again by late November, early December. They've been, in the process of trying to make repairs. They don't have great confidence that it will remain functional without further problems. It's, you know, it's that failed. And yet, their goal will be to try to keep it functional as a backup to the overhead line until the new line is fully built and commissioned. Then they would decommission that existing line, and they would need to remove it. So that, they, they will remove it eventually. That make sense?
It does. I just didn't know the extent of contamination and of the line and surrounding, the, the environmental effects of the, of the line.
Yeah, well, they, they're, they're going to need to work with environmental guidelines in the removal of it, for sure.
So it would be, part of the plan is that it would be remediated as part of the cleanup?
They'll be required, required to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Councilor St. Hilaire.
Yes, thank you. So I've sworn in this morning, and I've been doing a lot of reading and following this issue pretty closely, and I'm very excited to see all of you here in my, at my first meeting. Wanted to thank Councilors Housman, Flowers, and Rand, as well as Mayor Cahill, for standing up and recognizing the lack of public process here on, on this issue. And, you know, I also wanted to thank all the residents who came out tonight. I know everyone's busy in their personal lives, and it's really impactful for us as councilors to see residents coming out, speaking so passionately. It's important for us to hear your voices, and so thank you for coming out. I consider myself an advocate for good government and transparency and strong believer that government works best when folks have information at their hands and are able to have a seat at the table, weigh in and ask questions and get answers. And I'm all for, for stepping up here and, and figuring out these issues and finding out what the health and safety questions, concerns are and understanding the, the answers to that question, question, excuse me, and also revisiting the MBTA right-of-way access. As someone who's very familiar with the MBTA's inner workings, I know it can often be difficult, perhaps, or challenging to work with them, but if it is indeed the best option for the residents of Beverly, we should be strongly pursuing that. So also wanted to comment, I think the COVID pandemic issue is strong grounds for us to revisit the conversation with National Grid. I think there has been a lack of opportunity due to the pandemic to engage in, in conversation, and I would certainly look to use that as a, as a rationale. And I guess I, I just had one last, I guess more of a technical question, perhaps for you, Councilor Housman. There's been discussion of pausing the project and denying a permit. Has there been a permit application submitted at this point, or is that still?
So depends on which permit you're referring to. So there are, for purposes of your question, there are two permits that are relevant. One is the permit that National Grid submitted to the state Siting Board, which is the state regulatory body that grants permits for National Grid resource and companies like them, gas and oil, excuse me, gas and electric, to move forward with their installations. That permit application was, was submitted some time ago and went through an approval process, part of which involved public notice, like the, the meeting in the COVID center that I didn't know about. And that, that permit has in fact been granted. The next step relevant to your question really is a permit before the city council asking for, as National Grid does, sort of at a relatively routine basis, say when there, you know, there, there's a, a new building going up and they have to run a line, they have to come to us for certain permitting. It's essentially the same kind of permit application, and so the city council will have an opportunity to have a public hearing and, and take a vote on allowing those. Those are typically allowed unless you're fighting double polls, like I did at one point. Typically allowed in the ordinary course. Obviously, this one is not in the ordinary course. That application has not been submitted. There's been no request submitted to the city council yet from National Grid. I am hopeful that they are hearing us, that they will at some point be willing to engage in a process of changing the paradigm, right, for this project and maybe use that as a model for other projects going forward. But at least for the time being, there's no application before us, and we just have to wait and see while we, in the meantime, try to engage with them. Okay? Is that, is that your question?
No, I appreciate it, yeah, very helpful.
Okay, great. That's it for legal affairs at the moment.
Public Services and Committee of the whole, both to my left, Councilor Rotundo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few things that you had. One thing I want to recognize is there's a gentleman who sent us an email this morning and kind of summarized up some of the process that's occurring or things that could happen or couldn't happen. We've got a hundred pages of documents from the Siting Board. We've got the, and I'm talking for me, coming onto the council two years ago and really getting caught up to speed, you know, reading these pages, the hundred pages, the presentation that was given to the board. And then this gentleman sends a simple letter explaining it in much easier concept for us to understand. My question is, you know, you've, you've answered what, what we can do or what we can't do process-wise at this point. Now, do we really have the exception of the denying permit temporarily to open up the streets? But is the reason for National Grid not using the right of way, the exception of saying the MBTA, is it the cost? Is it, is it the fact that it's costing them more and that they feel that it's cheaper to go through the neighborhoods? I mean, this gentleman in this letter pretty much said, you know, right now they're, the MBTA is shuttle bussing people from Rockport and Gloucester because they're doing work on the bridge. So similarly mannered, they could do something similar. So, you know, I know they're saying that they can only do construction during certain times of the evening, you know, 1:00, 1:00 AM to 5:00 AM before the commuter rail starts. So, you know, it seems as if the National Grid's taking an easier route without having to work with MBTA. And that's just my perception of reading this. So that's kind of what my question is, is, is it more cost-effective for National Grid, although it's not necessarily more beneficial for us? As, you know, we're tearing up the streets and everything, and even though that we're going to get money to repair the streets, but the reality of it is, is, are they just not going the right of way, mere fact of them saving money by going through the neighborhoods? Thank you.
I can respond briefly to at least part of that, which is to say, as I mentioned, National Grid has both an EMF report as to why we shouldn't be concerned about public health, and they have an engineering report which argues that it's not really feasible to use the railroad section. So I'd refer you to their engineer's assessment as to why they think it's not feasible to use the railroad route. But that again is, you know, you have to consider the source, if you will.
That's.
Pun intended. And then, is, as the mayor, as we've heard about this evening, the city is going to engage its own independent assessment report of, of the feasibility of that. I, I think my own personal take, just to, to give an editorial comment, I guess, is I think, as was mentioned here this evening, Beverly was the path of least resistance, perhaps, in this process. And so that's, that's sort of where we, why we ended up here. A number of the reasons that are given in the application before the Siting Board as to why it made, from the National Grid's point of view, why they thought it was better to go through Beverly's streets and neighborhoods, as best as I can tell, actually don't, either are equally applicable to going, you know, through our, through our neighborhoods or no longer exist. In other words, they said certain things had to be done, and those things, and because they hadn't been done, it made sense to go through our streets. Well, as best I know, and I, I don't know for sure, but some of those things have, have already been completed. So they don't seem to still exist as a reason why the MBTA route couldn't be used. But I completely agree with you on the engineering side that, hey, we, we know that they bus people all the time, and we don't have an engineering report yet which explains, hey, why couldn't they simply close it down for a certain period of time, use, use buses, and, and get it done that way? So that, I mean, that, that's part of what we still need to learn, but that's sort of a, a brief answer. I don't know if the mayor wants to.
He's over here now.
He's over here. Oh, sorry. Maybe he wants to add anything else to that.
It's always fun to sit next to Al. But, so I, I would say, Councilor, to just go back and give another look at, at this document that we shared with you folks what a meeting or two ago to make sure it's, it's part of the public record, because it, it's the, it's the constructibility review that Grid hired somebody to conduct back in the late summer of 2018. And you'll see, there, there's a checklist of reasons that they, that they, that they list here as to why it's not, quote, "constructable" in the right of way. I think it's a, you know, the, we, we clearly will have the person we hire review this, and we'll go beyond that in terms of, you know, looking for them to do, you know, to not just do a, a document review, but go, go do their own work in, in looking at the feasibility. But that, you know, that's, that's really, when you look to what Grid is, is really leaning on to say that it's not doable, it's right here in this document.
So that goes to speak to, that's their study. And it's like anything, is we can look at studies for everything, and there's one side to another side. So if you are saying that as a city, we'll do our own study, which will give, like you said, focus on what would be the best benefit of our city as opposed to what's the best benefit of National Grid, that I would find more reliable than what theirs is. So obviously, like I said, there's studies, there's counterpoints to every study. You can see one thing, and then another study can come out and say total opposite. So I would be more happy to see the fact that if the city is going to be putting their own study forward and then going back with the response to National Grid, because then at least they're looking at the interest of the city. And that's why I say, is it over profit or money-wise for them to choose not the right of way? Because their study says it, but that's their study.
Yeah.
So that's why we're on campus, skepticism.
And not to, not to get in the weeds here, but just a couple of thoughts. Some of the things that are here are guidelines that the MW, MBTA uses for work within their right-of-way and the need that there would conceivably be a need for a waiver from a, a distance from the, the rail, you know, the, the rail line itself to work. Couple of others have to do with the, the kind of current crowdedness of infrastructure within the right-of-way and the need to put some, you know, significant infrastructure in. The line that will be eventually removed is essentially, you know, it's, it's, it's a tube with, you know, with, with, the line's inside the tube, and then there's, what is the liquid?
Fluid.
You know, so petroleum. So, you know, that's how it was done in 1970.
I believe it's mineral oil. I'm not sure. It's not, it's petroleum?
I probably, I, I shouldn't go down the rabbit hole. I guess I should just say that some of, the, the current day best practices, right, require these manholes. And I think it's, let me just read this one, this one bullet, and then we'll leave it at that, and, and, you know, just invite and encourage anybody and everybody to look, look at this document. It's now up on our website. Jocelyn put it up while we were talking. So thank you for that, Jocelyn, to make sure it's, it's easily accessible. If you go looking, you would go to the engineering page, Jocelyn, and then, and then click on projects on the left-hand side, and then you, that would pop up from there. So engineering department from our homepage, projects on the left side. Yeah, an example is six manholes would be needed along the railroad right-of-way. Each manhole requires an excavation approximately 12 feet wide and 28 feet long and workspace around the excavation for trailer, tractor-trail delivery trucks and a crane to set the manhole sections. Next bullet talks about permanent vehicle access needed to each manhole location for initial installation and future maintenance and repair. These are listed as, you know, barriers to, to, to this constructing it here. We may not agree that they are barriers that can't be overcome, barriers that shouldn't be, you know, worked with both Grid and, and the MBTA on. So again, you know, this, this is, as you said, it's, it's the study that they commissioned, and it, it's their rationale for not, for it not being a feasible option. We will, you know, as, as soon as we can do it right, we'll get that person on board, and we'll, we'll get our own study done.
Thank you.
Councilor Rotundo, are you?
Thank you.
And I just want to say, Councilor Rotundo, I, I agree with you. I was on the Siting Board hearing, and the two reasons, although we do have this study, I heard raised were difficulty of working with the MBTA and cost. And so I think I, like you, would be really, am eager to see our own study and how we can assess those. Councilors Ames or Rand? Councilor Ames?
Thank you. It, this is an impressive room. I think this is the first room where I probably know more people in this room than not, and many are friends. So I, I applaud you for all coming out tonight. I want to tell you that I see you, and I hear you, loud and clear. And as councillor Flowers mentioned, for about a year or so now, I've been representing probably almost a half of a precinct of people who have been affected by chemicals that were dumped by Varian, in probably 1950s through the 70s or 80s, that have leached their way through groundwater into their neighborhoods. And, so now it's Varian that's owned by Siemens, and the site is owned by, is a company occupying it now, CPI, that's part of an $8 billion California conglomerate. So when you talk about trying to speak to power, this, they are an amazing group of residents, you know, that have been aided by Will Cosmas in the back corner, and Jan Schlickman, and Senator Lovely, and my at-large councillors, and the mayor, and a lot of very powerful, dedicated residents, who have come together and worked. And in fact, and, you know, to the point that I've walked this neighborhood with both councillor-elect Bowen, and our new councillor president, council president next year, councillor Flowers. We went to the Martin O'Leary's house, and, who lost a daughter in her 20s to cancer, and turned around, and I said, "Stop, look up." And there was the plant, right on the horizon. You know, as Darlene Casola told a group in a meeting during COVID, because these chemicals leach their way into the basement air and penetrate, we're trapped in our homes, and we don't know if our homes are killing us. And Varian has used their time and their money to try to stretch this out. But I would say, and I have said to Varian, and I would say to you officials with Grid, this is not an engineering problem, this is a political problem. This is a problem of community. This is a problem of coming together and forging a solution together that will work for all of us. And so I will tell you that I have a pause sign in, on my front, front of my house.[1303.16][1303.16](APPLAUSE) And I would say to my fellow councillors, that I don't think it's really our job to solve this problem. It's our job to create the space, and the room, to let all the people involved solve this problem, to enough satisfaction. And so, you know, I am so grateful to the support of my colleagues, and the elected officials, in their support of Varian. It is an absolute pleasure for me to support you.
Thank you, councillor Ames. Councillor Rand?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight, and to councillors Houseman and Flowers for doing all the legwork to get this meeting up and running. And as a combined effort, I can see that this is a great place to have conversation. I think there are still a lot of questions out there, now that we're sort of in the process of listening and hearing each other. There are a lot of logistics. I think it's important to note that, and it's been said a couple different ways, but it is important to note that the city council does, as a lot of you in the room know, have the power to deny a permit, when National Grid does come and ask us to open the street up for this project. And that would require a majority vote from the council to deny or approve that permit. It's not totally clear beyond that, where that, how far that kind of power would take the process, or the project, would that, you know, there are other examples in different communities, where the state Siting Board can then say, "Hey, actually, we completely disagree with you, city council, we're just letting the project go forward." So I just, I don't want to be a downer, but I want to make that very clear, that that is a reality, that has happened in other communities. I think we're all still exploring, through our own city solicitor's office, what, where our strength lies, and how we can sort of guide the conversation and process going forward. I also want to be very clear that part of using the right-of-way along the train tracks includes easements from private property. So I think, no matter which way you look at this, this is a huge project that will affect a lot of citizens wherever it lands. And it's really important that we're here and involved in conversation. I really do feel like that's what was missing from this whole project. There are a lot of factors that have been shared already in this room, that created this situation. And I completely agree that we have an opportunity here. I like the way, Alyssa, that you shared that vision with us. We have an opportunity here to sort of engage in a process that's meaningful, and could be an example of a good way to proceed with projects like this, as we're going to start seeing them, hopefully, to make room for more sustainable energy. So, I am open, I am committed to pausing this project, and I'm open to conversation. I'm also getting feedback from people who are, would like to see this project move forward quickly. To be totally honest, I received a couple emails today from constituents who said, "Let's get this going, we need the reliability." So I'm listening, I'm receiving comments from constituents, and encourage you to keep contacting us and being engaged. Thank you.
I'm just taking notes, but thank you. I do want to mention again, thank you to Representative Paresella and Senator Lovely's office. I think one of the issues that we're talking about here, in terms of working with the MBTA and working with some of these larger entities, your commitment to really be our partners on that, I think is hugely important. I know we had the opportunity, some of us in a smaller meeting, to hear you voice that, but Representative Paresella, thank you for being here tonight, so that the residents and everybody watching on BevCam could also hear. And I think that's such an important piece of how we move forward, not only collectively at our city level, but also rely on our state, our partners at the state level, to be working together with us, which is incredibly valuable, always very valuable in a process like this,
Councillor Flowers and I agreed that our meeting this evening would run from 7:00 to 9:00. And conveniently, in terms of comments from the councillors, which is sort of the last stage of this meeting, we are basically at 9 o'clock. So councillor Flowers, unless there's anything more you would like to add, what I would say to the public is that this is not the last meeting we're going to have. There's a lot of information out there already, there's a lot more information that will be coming. I know the council will be working with the mayor's office to make sure the documents get put on the state, excuse me, the city website, so they're available for you. And I think you can rest assured that, you know, council takes very seriously the responsibility and the authority that we have to deal with this on behalf of city residents and our constituents. So unless you have something more to add, I think we can close our hearing today?
Yes, I think you did a good job of just reminding us all that this is a piece of a process, not the final meeting. And I also am reminded that our Assistant Clerk, Ms. Dixon, would want to make sure that we articulate for the record that these, the official orders discussing this issue that you and I had filed, will continue to be held in Subcommittee, both in Legal Affairs and Public Services.
That is correct. As Chair of Legal Affairs, the orders on our agenda that relate to this matter will continue to be held in Subcommittee. As it is in your...
In Public Services, yes.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. With that, then I will take a motion to adjourn Subcommittee of Legal Affairs.
So moved.
Second.
Is it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Legal Affairs is adjourned.
I entertain a motion to adjourn Subcommittee of Public Services.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public Services is adjourned. And a motion to adjourn Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Committee of the Whole is also adjourned. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.